I think we'll call the regular board meeting in Hibbing. Public Schools ISD 701, November 21st, 2023 at 3:30 PM Central Standard Time. In the boardroom, with that, I'd like to welcome everybody here. That being said, we'll move to item two. Pledge of allegiance, please stand if you wish.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With them, move to item three, a motion to approve the agenda. So moved. Support by Director Egan, supported by Director McLaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With them, we'll move to item four, motion to approve the consent agenda. We're going to pull item G out of there for discussion. And then probably at the end of this, we'll discuss whether we want to continue with the new way or the old way.
All move.
Support.
Moved by Director Volter, supported by Director McLaughlin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item G. Director Luardi on it.
Oh, we're talking about this now?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were moving that down. I'm sorry, misunderstood. Yeah, I just wanted to have some discussion around that because when I looked at what we were given, I just don't, we're given nothing to compare. All we're given is, you know, what is being presented here today to vote on. But there's no duties to compare it to, there's no salary that was given to us compared to unless we specifically asked. The other thing I think too is that we haven't even had our audit. So I find it hard to give a 30% increase in salary. And we have no idea where we're sitting. And for a while now, we've been talking about possible cuts for teachers.
What was the 30% increase?
You said there wasn't anything said about salaries, and now you just tell me there's a 30% increase.
No, what was given to us in here was the memorandum of agreement for what is being proposed, but nothing to know what it is.
Exactly what it is? Is that what you're?
Well, what to compare it to, so you know what it looks like.
Did it say it was 30% more than the other secretary?
No, I just did the math.
And you were comparing the other secretary we have there to the one that we're adding or whatever? Or what?
I'm, so I asked Mr. Ulrich then for some additional information because I wanted to really see what type of increase it was. You know, it could be very small, it could be very large, whatnot. So he provided the agreement with the district and the Hibbing confidential unit. And so I just did the math, and that's what I came up with.
Oh, so it was about 30% higher?
Yeah.
Oh, for the, for train's position we're talking?
Yes.
Okay. I thought we were talking about the other secretary with Carrie.
And I'm just, you know, for me, when you talk about in your email how the job has evolved, I mean, since COVID, whose job hasn't evolved in our district? And I think it'd be interesting to know what percentage of our teachers aren't even making this. I mean, I think it's hard to justify a yes with the little information that we were given when we may still be in a position where we have to cut teachers. And if there's no comparison of what she's doing now compared to what she will be doing in this role, that's, that just leaves such a big gap. And this isn't anything personal, this is nothing, it would be the same thing if anybody was in that role. It's just, that's a huge lift. And I just think we have that responsibility to make sure it makes sense for our staff, to our staff and the public, because they're all going to have questions along those. And I just, to me, there wasn't enough information given, and I would have liked to see that before we do that and to have the audit information.
I mean, I'm supportive too, but I think she makes some good points that maybe we should have seen. Here was the old duties, here are the new duties. Would that be difficult or?
Well, I did send the new job description.
Yeah.
And you have, you have access.
We all got that, right?
That was, that's included in the.
The new job duties.
Yeah, the new job description is there.
Yeah.
And you all have all of our contracts, I mean, from previous meetings.
Yeah, I guess I just didn't do a ton of homework on it, but it sounds like she has some valid concerns, I guess.
No, I understand, and I completely understand. I mean, I, and I, you know, this probably does seem a little bit, maybe a little bit different, or, but this is really a unit transfer that we do these every board meeting. We have promotions, we have asking people that take additional positions for additional pay.
But does this make of an increase?
Depending on the situation, yeah, absolutely. You can go from a supervisory, you know, from a just a menial role to a supervisory role where they get $15,000, $20,000 raise. It's, we're doing those job transfers all the time, so.
And the other thing I noticed is that it still even says that we would keep that position, the secretary position, open for in the future. So now we're saying that the assistant is going to be a secretary, so they're going to be taking on some of that role? So why are we leaving that open?
I think I explained that in the email to the board, that I want to leave that position within the confidential unit. So a future superintendent, future board, future forever. If they say we want to go back to just a straight-up superintendent secretary, so be it. And you could do that. And then that's available, it's not, it's not a renegotiation with the confidential unit about adding that position back in. So that language in there just keeps it in there as a, as a place marker if future board or superintendent or whoever wants to change that role. It would work if somewhere in the future we decide to go HR director, you could have that HR director, but still that secretarial spot would be there, and you would have to go through the whole stuff.
To create it again or whatever.
Create a new position, yeah. Yeah.
Because I look at it personally, I've seen all the work that she's done in the past, I've seen the work that she's doing presently, and you mentioned an HR person. She's basically an HR person. This district is saving a lot of money by the work that she does. So I agree too that maybe there should have been more information and more clarification on how we went about to do this. But I have no problem with this individual getting what she deserves for the amount of work that she does.
Sure.
And I agree with you, you kept it open so that if you're gone, or the board's not here anymore, they want to decide by 10 years from now they want to do it that way. And you can go back.
And it's been okay by both union sides, so that's good.
And I think it's really about updating the position description based on the work she is doing, has been doing relatively recently, I guess. And then I'm going to, like in my world, call it like a job audit and put it in the bargaining unit that most appropriately fits. I mean, I don't know, that's kind of the way I read it. And yeah, I mean, to your point, it's, it's a change.
And oh, when Trina retires, whoever replaces her will be going into the same position, right? This upgraded position.
Not necessarily, I think.
Well, not necessarily.
I think it would depend on potential experience and what the need is at that time.
We could, we could change it again at that point.
Go back, go back the way.
Because maybe the person we hire that replaces her isn't going to have the skills she has.
Well, maybe that would be the right time to start considering. If we were to retire two years.
Yeah.
Type of thing. That might be a perfect type of story. Maybe we should be looking at HR because she's already doing that job.
If you can afford.
If we can afford a $100,000 a year.
We probably, I'm guessing that's not going to happen.
No.
Especially since we've combined it now kind of with this secretary position.
It's just an option that's over.
Yeah.
Or if we have to, we can accept.
Or if we put a post out to replace, like if Trina were to choose to retire, to replace that position, right? And if we find that the job market is such that we can't find anybody, then that other position is still open. At that point, the superintendent board may decide to then repost for this other position.
The secretary job.
A secretarial job.
Some places are giving up licensures for experience because they can't find people to license them. It's a mess.
Well, I think, I think having, keeping that secretary job is really a good idea.
Well, that, that was, you know, just a recommendation from the attorney that, you know, again, if circumstances change in six months, Trina's not here for whatever reason, then you might have to reevaluate that.
Couple options or.
I mean, she's unique because she holds skills that, that really, we could employ two people for. Or maybe we should be employing an HR director for it. And when she leaves, all that knowledge and all those skills are going to go if we can find somebody that has that, that can backfill. I just don't know what that's going to look like today, and I just want to have some options, you know, going forward. Not to tie your hands or future superintendent's hands, just with some options, that's all this does.
Yeah, we can always readdress it if we have to.
It would need the other position open right now. I mean, can it be with the understanding that we're not going to post for that position?
Correct, yeah.
As a board, we're going to leave that open?
Correct.
You know what I mean? Because sometimes if the position is created, we don't want to post it.
No.
No, 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 no. And so, I don't want, mean to put Cam on the spot, that's, I don't want to do that to her here in these meetings because that isn't her role. But she is technically going to be the new rep for the confidential unit. Correct. So, I mean, what the board's seeing here, are you in agreement and understanding? We've talked, we're not filling the superintendent secretary position. We're just keeping it in the unit in case we want to fill it sometime if Trina were to leave.
Correct, yeah. Now, it's just something we have.
Okay, all make a motion to accept. Hopefully. Motion by Chair Berg, second item by Chair Volter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Aye.
Let the minutes show that we're neither. Okay, now, once and for all, we've got a full board. Do you want to leave the consent agenda the new way or go back to the old way?
I can find what the way is right now.
Mike?
I have no problem with it, but the information that we get in our package, I mean, it pretty much tells us everything. I mean, if there's a question, we do like we did today, we pull it, we just pull it out and we follow it out.
Director Luardi?
I'm fine either way, I like, I appreciate that we can have still discussion like we did today. I think it, I feel different if that was off the table.
And I'm that way too.
Director Kim?
Yeah, you know, I guess whatever is easiest, if it's easier to put the agenda together in a way that we show it in the administrative business upfront. Because the last two meetings, we pulled important stuff off the consent agenda anyway.
And that's a good point, we can go both ways. I guess if there's enough controversial things or whatever for discussion, we can put that separate. But I mean, when all that gets working.
Okay, so we'll leave until we have any issues again.
I'm going to vote for the old way. But it sounds like I'm the only one. Well, I like all the discuss, I like being able to, okay, like for instance, H or Daryl Siskie. If it was regular, it was the old way, I might say, oh, now are we adding a behavior intervention specialist? Or are we? But if it's this way, I'm not apt to ask anything. So if, I guess this way keeps my mouth shut.
Well, no, but I, I too.
Cut this discussion off.
If it's less, like, we're going to keep pulling stuff up.
Yeah, we would pull that off. We would pull the Daryl Siskie off, there's no controversy. It's just that I'm more apt to ask about it if it's, if we do things the old way, because we're going individually.
But you can anyway, right?
I can anyway, but I won't. I won't, because there's no controversy.
I guess the way I look at it again, is if we did our packet, we look through it, it's described clearly, and we have, if there's a question at that time, we're getting paid to do a job. Our job is to look at that packet, so try to make sure we do it, or I do. And if I have any questions, then I would bring it up at this time.
And we can call it superintendent or.
But it's not just for us.
But I'm not an rush to get out of his name, so, but that's just me.
And it's not just for us, like the last meeting. To me, I felt as though I did my homework and I'm new, but it's to be transparent with the community too. So if people watch the meeting or if the paper picks up on something, I want, I want people to know that we do our homework and that we have thoughtful conversation and consideration and decision-making.
Okay, we'll keep it the old way for now.
That we are? I was the only one that wanted it that way.
I mean, the new way.
The new one.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Got my way, yay.
Again, that was just a test to see who was paying attention.
But we're pulling off anything we want to ask.
Yes. Like I just said, that's just a test to see who's paying attention. Okay, thank you, that's good discussion. With that, we'll move to item five, public comment.
There's none, Mr. Chair.
With that, we'll move to item six.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. Mr. Berg and some parents from the band, Booster's here tonight, and Mr. Berg is going to be talking about new band uniforms. I just want, before Mr. Berg starts, I just, yesterday got something in the mail from a graduate from the 1930s, and that picture was included in the mailing. So your picture that you have here of a potential, it's really similar to 100 years ago almost.
They're rotating back, I guess.
We could probably find some of these up in the trophy room.
Yeah.
So you go right ahead, Mr. Berg, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having us today. So my name's Matt Berg, I teach the eighth through 12th grade bands here, as well as the marching band. I'm joined with two of our Hibbing Band Parents Organization board members.
I'm Melinda Ruzich, I'm the president of the band board and in charge, I'm the parent volunteer coordinator for marching band.
Cassandra Balak, I'm the treasurer for the band.
So the reason we're here today is to ask for funds for new marching band uniforms. This is actually part of a whole rebranding that we're working on right now, which is really good timing with our 100-year celebration and all that stuff that's going on with the high school this coming summer. So part of this whole package, we have a brand-new website, for a brand-new band website that is live, and it's really professionally made and looks really good. We're also working on a new trailer wrap. So currently, our band trailer has a lot of outdated sponsorships on it, things that are gone out of business, and it's also looking a little weathered. So while the trailer's in great condition, we want a new wrap to go on that with some new local sponsorships. I'll get to that when we talk about fundraising later. And then new uniforms. So this is all part of kind of a whole rebranding that we're trying to have ready for our Hibbing Jubilee Parade this summer. So the goal is that we'll have these new uniforms and trailer wrap by our Hibbing parade. So a couple, just piece of background information. Our current uniforms, which you can see here, were purchased in 2006, so that makes them about 18 years old. The average lifespan of a marching band uniform is going to be about 10 years. That was just collected from the band director's national Facebook group, which I'm a member of, and just researching on there what everyone has kind of said. And then also talking to Stan Berry, who is our designer for our new uniforms. Most people agree that 10 years is the average lifespan of a uniform. We are a competitive marching band. We are the only parade-competition marching band really north of the cities. The only other competitive marching band in northern Minnesota is Grand Rapids, but they compete on field shows, they do not do street competitions that we do. So they're just competing in a different league essentially. So with that being said, we do compete with a lot of marching bands from the cities, and we do go down to the cities. Our last competitive parade was a Santee, and so we want to make sure that we are maintaining that level of competition, looking good, and, you know, standing out against our competition.
And a little, I had in that parade, we, we were in competition against three other cities that were down in the Minneapolis area. They all had new uniforms, and we still were able to pull off a superior rating. So that was, or not a superior, it was an excellent rating, so.
Oh, yeah, all three, well, there's four marching bands there, three of them competed. All three of us got excellent ratings.
But our uniforms looked extremely different than their uniforms.
Do they?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. The marching band has doubled in size in the past two years, over-doubled actually. In the year immediately following COVID, that we could first have marching band, we had 21 students. Last summer, we had 49. With the projected numbers coming up in the current sixth and seventh grade bands, we are projected to have about 80 to 100 students in marching band in the next five to six years.
Oh, that makes my heart. My heart just grew.
Yes, so lots of good news coming up.
Is that just assuming that all of them will be in marching band?
That is, nope. So that is, in sixth and seventh, we're looking at about 60 to 70 students per band. And then that is, having taken in a 10% attrition rate, so 10% each year of students dropping out of band, which is normal and considered healthy for any band program. So that's taking that into consideration. And then at that, our goal in the next five to six years is to be graduating 35 to 40 students in band as seniors. So even half of that, if we have 20 students per grade, out of the 35 to 40 that we're hoping to graduate, if 20 of them are in band, that still gives us 80 students in marching band. So that's taking into account a 10% dropout rate and only half of them being in marching band. We would still have 80, and that's just the band students, that's not including collar guard. So collar guard would bring us from the 80 to 100 range. So as the actual uniform goes, there's a few different parts to the uniform. The jacket itself, and so on these ones, it has a few different parts. The sash comes off, so this is one part. The jacket, it zips in the back.
We have bibs. Sorry, I stepped them back here.
So the pants, which in marching band lingo, we call the bibs, so pretty much overalls. The hat, or what we call the shako, which also has the plume that goes at the top. And then we also have these hat boxes that the hats are stored in.
That I won't open, because it'll fall apart.
But are we looking at the current, the new?
No, these are the old.
These are.
I was going to say, these are the old, right?
Yes, these are the old.
These are our current, that we used last summer.
Yeah, okay.
I actually thought that looked nice. I thought it was anyone.
I do, they do, they do, but they are quite old, and yeah, like we're going to tell you.
So I'm the next slide here.
And it feels like yesterday, they just had the bib, where they unveiled them in the auditorium.
Exactly.
It feels like yesterday.
Yeah, it does. It does. And they are nice uniforms, but as we'll explain to you next what some of the downfalls of this uniform are.
Yeah. So our main concern is health and safety. Every single summer, we have kids have medical emergencies for heat exhaustion. These uniforms, and if we want, we can pass this around. They are made from a very thick wool material. So when we are marching out in the sun and we have a four-mile parade that they're walking down the street in the heat of the sun just glaring on them, and then on top of that, you know, marching band is extremely physical activity. It requires a lot of core strength and upper body strength the entire time. It's, it gets to be a little too much for some students when the temperature gets too hot. At certain points, we will switch to, if it gets into the high 80s, and then depending on humidity, we will switch into an alternate uniform, which is just their shirt they wear under it, which is all matching, and shorts. And they have all matching shorts.
Why would they ever make, why would they ever make wool?
That is a classic question.
Well, I'm sure that they, they vote longevity of them because the material.
Because they last.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they have to be cleaned every year, so.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Hot.
Yeah, they're so hot.
So what you can see on the jacket really well is we're starting to get a lot of discoloration, especially on the collar, that's where we collect the most sweat. And so we're starting to get a lot of discoloration on the collar. We do send these in to get professionally dry cleaned after every marching band season. But two problems with that is, A, we don't have a dry cleaner as a Hibbing anymore. The nearest one is Grand Rapids. It costs us $800 to $1,000 to have them dry cleaned every summer, and.
And that's at the current number of uniforms that we're, you know, cleaning now.
Is there any creative value in those, who you're buying up from?
Possibly. We will look at selling them before we just get rid of them. Yeah. So I'm not sure what that would be, but we'll.
I'm just curious what happens.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into selling them first. Some of the uniforms are tearing. There's actually a part that I actually forgot to bring that we have worn in the past, which is the gauntlets that go around the wrist. We have just stopped using those entirely because they no longer function. You can see like with the sash here, there's lots of, the sequins are falling off, lots of tearing of the threads. As far as hats go, you know, the hats tend to break a lot on the joints here. And then on the inside, our hat boxes are.
Are held together.
Are held together by zip ties. So the hat boxes are in not much better condition. These have been taken very well, or have been very well taken care of the past 18, or, what did I say? 16, 18 years? 18 years. But, you know, with being on the trailer, transported to and from all these parades, they just get a little beat up with all the, all that kind of stuff.
Do you, do you let the students, the band members take their whole, get up home?
Nope. So they, they stay in the band room after every parade. We have lockers in the band room that all the uniforms go in. And then at the day of a parade, the students will come in the band room, get their instrument, get the uniform, load it onto the trailer, we get home, they load it out of the trailer back into the thing, and then.
That's not any part of the damage then?
Correct.
No, no. A little bit of dust come into that, like where we're able to dress. Like a lot of times, we're dressing in a field, you know, wherever we're staging. You know, we are sometimes lucky to be able to stage inside of, say, like a fire hall or something, but a lot of times, they're like, there's the, the field, that's where you stage, that's where you dress, so.
And question, the inside of the trailer, if I remember right, was put together very nicely. And they hang the uniforms, there's places to secure the hat. Is it also functional?
Up above is all the shelving with bungees that the kids, that we put, so they all are secure there. And then all the uniforms go in a C shape around the edges while the, in the middle of the trailer are the instruments on there.
And that's still all okay?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a very nice trailer, the inside of the trailer is just wonderful.
And it's customized just for our band.
Yeah, yeah. Also, you know, with, you can see, this is on this uniform, you can see a lot of that, you know, dirt and kind of stuff. Dry cleaners cannot get this stuff out.
No. Last summer, when I brought in the, so not this current summer, but the summer prior, when I brought them in, they ran them three times, and they felt very guilty that they were unable to get them wiped. And they just said, I said, it's all you can do, you know? So they ran them three times, but only charged us once because they felt guilty that they couldn't get them wiped again.
Are these new ones going to be like cooler?
Yes.
The names, those things felt.
We're, we're hoping to solve all of those problems we just told you.
Yes. So the new uniforms, what you're looking at right now, this is the second draft that we've had. This is by no means going to be the final draft. I was really hoping to get the next round of drafts before this meeting, but I'll probably get them in like an hour or something.
Soon as we lock out.
Yeah. So this is a rough, very rough idea of what our uniforms will look like. With the new uniforms, the first thing is there's no white. That's the first thing I requested from the designer, is that we don't include white. Even though that is our school color, it's just discolors too fast. So we're going with the gray and the blue, and then the white. So we're going with the gray and the blue, and then the white kind of shows in, you can see kind of the stripe, the main stripe down the middle, and then what they call like at the cape. So that's where we get kind of the white from.
Is that sequins again?
I was gonna say, is that sequins?
So yes, the, what you're looking at right now has the sequins down the middle and in the cape. But we, for the next round of drafts, I told them, let's look at more options of just, instead of sequins, they can do like a fabric that just has like, it sparkles, you know, but it's not sequins. So we're looking at a lot of different options. The new uniforms are completely machine washable. So we will save that $800 to $1,000 and plus more when the band grows, we'll save all that money on dry cleaning, so we don't have to do that. And then they are much, much lighter and more breathable. And in fact, this is, you can't see it in this draft, but in the next draft, I also asked them to get us a completely different design. You see this in a lot of new marching band uniforms, where it's actually just a vest. So it's, it's a sleeveless vest that goes over, and then what they wear under it is kind of like a dry fit part of the uniform, and that is part of the uniform with the colors and everything. But with, that's the most breathable option there is. It's gonna be very, very lightweight, so.
Instead of this, or in addition to this style?
Basically, everything would be the same minus the sleeves.
Which would be the dry fit?
Right, the sleeves would be like a dry fit. It'd be part of the uniform, so it'd still look very good.
So another question, the plumes. I always remember those being a real pain, because if it starts to rain during a parade, then you're running trying to get the plumes. Are they like rain resistant, water resistant?
I'm not sure about water resistant and stuff like that. But the, the plumes are standard as far as uniforms go, so we wouldn't eliminate the plumes. But I can ask for sure if they have water resistant options. And I'm unsure.
Is that jacket that I'm looking at attached in the front?
No, it's still set in the back.
Does that look good? That seems like real hassle. Because you gotta have someone help you then.
Yeah.
You can't get dressed yourself.
We have, we have lots of moms.
Really?
Yeah. We bring.
Don't they have anything that you attach in the front?
I think because they wanted to be, you know, a more cohesive look in the front and not as much in the back, so most of them zip in the back, but.
And is that a jacket? And what's the mock turtle neck thing, is that attached to it?
Yeah, that's, that's part of it, as, as part of the jacket. Some of the things that were, I asked them to change is, a lot of the stripes you're seeing in the, what would be the right arm and on the gray side of the jacket, I asked them to remove that kind of stuff. I think that just looks too busy. And then the logo on the hat, asked them to bring that down and put it on the gray side. And then also get an option with the, the sleeveless one with the dry fit. And then doing something different with the shako with the hat. So they're gonna come back to me with three more options, and then we'll probably go through four or five rounds of drafts before we settle on something we really like.
Could you use, use the logo on the hat and pull it in there?
We could.
Yeah, I really like, I love the hat logo.
Yeah.
We're just putting Hibbing or something. Or something else, yeah, I would not take it off the hat.
Yeah, definitely something to consider for sure, I'll ask them about that.
What does the, the schedule look like? I mean, how many parades do you guys do in the summer?
So marching band runs six weeks. It starts immediately after school gets out. It's Monday through Friday, 8 to 10 a.m. And then we have pretty much one parade a weekend. And then till we get to the last week, where we have pretty much one parade a day, four a week.
Yes, we have four the last week of marching band, we have four parades.
Yes, 4th of July, that's right.
4th of July, and then we have, yeah, before, we have 4th of July, then we have the Hibbing Parade, we have the Parade in Floodwood, and we have the Icanti Parade.
Oh, you do go beyond that, yeah, that's right, because Hibbing's the week after.
Yeah, yeah. And normally Hibbing, Hibbing is our second to last parade, and then we go to Floodwood that Sunday, and that's when marching band would end. Any questions on the new uniforms or comments?
Do they go with gloves? Is that gloves I'm saying?
Uh, no, we would not have the gloves.
So where do you want the fundraiser?
That's the next, that's the next one.
So like I said before, projected numbers are 80 to 100 in the next five to six years. Standberry, which is the company that's designing the uniforms, they are the largest, most well-respected uniform company in the country. They advise purchasing 25% more than what you're expecting to have students. That is to account for the varying sizes of students, and they have formulas to know exactly, they'll tell you what to buy as far as they know, you know, most students are this size, and then, you know, so get majority of these sizes, and then they'll give you extremes on either end. So with that in mind, we're looking at purchasing 125 uniforms. The estimated cost that they gave me for 125 uniforms was $80,000. That would include a new jacket, a new bib, which is the pants, a new shako and plume. So the hat, pants and jacket, that would be the full works.
What's the shako again?
The shako is the, the hat, it's the hat, okay. Yeah, so this is the shako, and then this part is the plume.
So you can give a couple examples of what you want the trailer wrap and then these uniforms. Is that gonna come first, the uniforms, and then the wrap after, based off of the donations that you get, or is that, what's the top priority?
So we're trying to do it all in one, and we're actually using the trailer wrap as a fundraising opportunity. So with the next slide here, local, local business sponsorships. We have a draft here that we sent out, our treasurer, Cassie made this and sent this out to local businesses asking for donations. And these are what would go on our new trailer wrap. So they can donate, for example, these are just, the, the numbers we gave on there for the different clubs, that's just ideas, but they can donate any amounts they want. So the highest one, if they wanna be part of a whole move club, they can donate 10,000 plus, and they would get their logo put right on, kind of, a, a larger logo put on the side of the trailer, which, I mean, it doesn't get much better advertisement than that. You know, we're at every local parade up here, plus just driving down the street, plus local parades down in the cities. So we see, you know, tens of thousands of people every summer. So some really good advertising and sponsorship opportunities for people. So we're hoping, you know, getting the trailer wrap and getting those sponsorships will give us the fundraising for the uniforms. Because the uniforms are gonna cost much more than the trailer wrap.
I've got two things for you. One, could you give us your website, so that if somebody is interested in donating, they know where to go? And two, what is the delivery date on the, when, when do you have to have the money?
So I just emailed them the other day, actually, asking for kind of more guide, more specific dates as far as financing it goes. We have a lot of different options, you know, as far as paying all upfront or paying in, in chunks and all that kind of stuff. We're looking at purchasing, if we wanna have the uniforms by our Hibbing Jubilee Parade, we need to kind of everything wrapped up by the new year.
So the new year?
That's very short.
Yes.
Yeah, and we have been working on this since the beginning of the summer of marching band. But now we're just at that point where we're sending all the things out, all the donation letters and things out, so we have been working on this.
If like, did the math rate, the uniforms are about $640 apiece? Would one option be to try to get families to like buy a uniform? I mean, not, not like the students to purchase it themselves, but like a donation level to help with it, $650 or something?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Well, but for this eighth note, quarter note, all this. This is the actual letter I'm looking at, that Cassie sent, okay. So does a company know? Are they giving to the uniform or to the wrap, or to both?
It would, if, Cassie, correct me if I'm wrong here, but it would kind of depend on the company. This is just one draft that we, you know, we kind of change each one depending on who we're sending it to. And then we work with that company, asking them kind of what they'd want and.
And really, our first priority will be getting the uniforms in place, and anything above and beyond that.
Right.
The instruments and, and the drum line and.
So if they become donors, say they do the 1250 eighth note club?
Yep.
Is their name gonna be somewhere else on a plaque?
We're gonna have a list on our website as well.
On your website?
Yeah, so we're gonna put the QR code on the wrap, so anyone who gives less than that, we, we can link it, but space-wise, I don't think we'll have room on the trailer for all of the donations.
So which donations will be seen on the trailer, of what level?
The, the levels listed in the letter, yes.
Will, they will, their company name will be on those?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I didn't read it in detail, but I'm assuming that's all in there.
So, yeah, so then there'll be a QR code on the trailer, and that will link to our website, which will have a list of all donors to the uniforms.
Knowing that you know what the cost of each one is, it might be a good idea. Personally, for me, if I'm gonna sponsor, if you told me, I'm giving you $10,000, I wanna know I'm buying 30 uniforms.
Yeah, definitely.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, for sure. I think, I think companies would really like to know how to donate to the uniforms. I mean, and for one or two or three or four, you know?
You can have them compete against one another, one's like, oh, I'll buy 30, and the other will go, well, I'll buy 40.
Well, let's hope that happens.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Which are your one?
So in this letter, it talks about the band is in need of extra support as we move forward. So it kind of lumps investing in uniforms, drum line, large brass instruments, and so we've got the $205,000 number in here.
So, yeah, so this is all part of our kind of larger, and this gets out of the kind of rebranding now, but into, you know, there's a lot of things in the band room that have reached their age limit. So right now, uniforms are just top priority. But some things that we have all talked about, we, we've created kind of priority lists that we need to get figured out in the next few years here, is a new drum line. As far as just the instruments themselves, our carriers are great, but the instruments, I think, are 10 years old, and that's about as long as they're gonna continue to sound good. There's, so we're, we're looking at getting new drum line instruments, new tubas. Our tubas are verging on 20 years old, and those are becoming a money pit. I have to send them in every single year to get repairs. It costs about, just for the tubas, about $3,000 a year to get those repaired. This is all stuff that's very expensive. The drum line, I got an estimate from Poplar's Music for $10,000. Oh, no, that was with the carriers. I think it was 7,000, 6,000 or 7,000 for just the drums. And then tubas cost about 6,000 each.
So you mean you got a budget every year? What's their budget that's from us?
I'd have to look.
There's different parts of our budget, so we have a supplies budget, an instrument repair budget, and a transportation budget, that's shared between choir and band. So the instrument repair budget is almost entirely just used for band. And so we, we use up those budgets every year, and I just send as many instruments as I can each year in to get repaired.
So you don't, you don't have a replacement budget every year? So we can kind of cycle replacement instruments through?
So is that the only budget they get, those three categories, you said?
Further repairs and that.
The further repairs, further transportation, what was the third?
Supply, so that's where we buy new music. That's what like a new instrument would come out of. It's mostly spent on new music.
So at this point, some of the other expenses have been picked up by the parent band organization and the fundraising that the kids have done. So like, at the past meeting that we just had last week, we'll be purchasing cymbals with the fundraising money that the kids have, you know, it's a 50, it's not a 50/50 split, but there's always some portion of it that goes back to the band board. And that's how we've been able to purchase some of instruments, because we don't have that funds.
Does the band board have a healthy banking account?
At this point, I wouldn't necessarily call it healthy, but we've had to purchase quite a few things in the, recently. And then with our marching band growing and having overnights now, that took a big portion of the marching band.
So we charge dues for students to be in marching band. But even with that, Cassie, do you remember what the band parents ate last summer?
Yeah, so marching band costs approximately $15,000, at least it did last year. It's, you know, it's kind of our first full year since COVID. And the, the fees that we end up taking in are about $7,500, so about half of what the program actually costs. And I know we talked about growing the program, so to do that, we, you know, wanna try not to raise fees so that it's cost prohibitive for kids.
So what's the budget for the trailer wrap? So uniforms are 80, the trailer wrap is, do you know what that?
It was about 6,000, I believe.
And that was through Fina advertising here in town.
I think it would be nice to give people a chance to donate to you, to certain things. I think you'd do better that way than just say, will you donate to the band?
Okay.
We need instruments, we need uniforms.
We weren't sure which approach to take.
We, I, I mean, I, I don't know what other people think. I think that might be most successful, because then like Mike said.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, in today's age, any sport you're involved in, whether it's a sport or a band, they're asking the parents or somebody, I don't know if you approached your alumni. I'm sure there's some alumni band members out there that would be glad to help. You know, send some money out. But that's just a, fortunately, we're in that day and age where you gotta go out, you gotta pay for the money.
Yeah, we've had several fundraisers already. We've had tip jars out at all the local restaurants, asking for donations that way. We've, we've done quite a few, we've, we have a few coming up. We have chili cook-off that some parents are organizing, and also another like more formal dinner that they're going to be doing at Mike's Pub one evening too. So we have been trying to be creative and think of some other fundraising opportunities that maybe we haven't, haven't been done recently, or that not everyone is doing, so.
I can tell you, I've got six letters on my desk right now in my office to different mentor sports that are asking. It's tough.
It is, it is.
I, I guess my point on what I said before is that maybe if you had it where some, you could say, you can specify if you want your money to go towards uniforms, towards instruments, or towards the wrap. I don't know, just an idea.
Yeah, definitely.
And I'm just thinking, if our most immediate goal is that uniforms and the wrap, and it's, that's $86,000, $90,000, whatever, I just feel like that might mean something different than a donor getting a letter saying, we want, we wanna generate $205,000.
Yeah, I, I agree. It focuses on it, it says, we need uniforms.
Well, and then if you put in there that you want to generate the $90,000 by the Jubilee Parade.
And that would help too. It would say, oh, I gotta get on this and help them.
No.
By January 1st.
Oh, by January 1st, I'm sorry.
I saw that out in the paper though, that was nice. I think a lot of people probably saw.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
And the band sounded great last night.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So with alumni, actually, this summer is the all-class marching band alumni year. So they're, they're getting all the alumni together, they're gonna be in the Jubilee Parade. And so I'm good friends with the person who's helping organize that. And so some, there's some really exciting things we've talked about, doing kind of joint performances with them, hopefully, if we can, if we can make that kind of stuff work out. So it'd be really cool to have these uniforms to kind of showcase them. And we're also working on making commemorative coffee mugs. So on the, that we would sell to alumni, to anyone, but really targeting the alumni to have these mugs where. But really targeting the alumni to have these mugs where wrapping the mug would be all of our old high school uniforms. All, which we have a lot of these uniforms in the band room in storage right now. And so having all these uniforms with the years that they were, you know, in service, wrapping this mug, and then hopefully having this new uniform as the latest one.
I'm not here trying to tell you how to raise money, but one thing you could probably do, if you've got all those old uniforms, why don't you ask some of the old people, they wanna buy it, they can throw it.
Well, we only have like one, one or two of each uniform.
Go to the higher bidder.
There you go.
I can action it off.
Action it off.
But don't display them, but don't get rid of them for the summer.
No, cause we'd like to display them.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're not getting rid of them at all. We're not getting rid of them. No, they will be undisplaced, yes.
Yeah, during the hundred year thing.
Yes.
And really, the mugs are kind of a device more than anything to get the alumni aware of what we're trying to do and kind of talking to us and hopefully buying in.
Keep the board posted as you go along. Maybe come up with some other ideas too.
Have you asked Ben Owens yet, Dr. Ben Owens' fund?
We did submit a grant app for the Hibbing Foundation.
Did you get the Dr. Ben Owens' fund?
Yeah, and I've been working with Jennifer Hoffman. We were denied because we don't have any other funding secured at this point, so.
Denied by the Hibbing Foundation?
Yeah, we will be reapplying and working with some other grants as they're available.
But the Ben Owens Fund is separate.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So you're doing that, you're gonna do that also.
Are you a 501(c)(3)? They're a nonprofit, so they can go ahead and they go to anyone to get one.
So as of date, we don't have any funds, means, I mean, what do we have? I'm focusing on the $90,000 like right now.
Yeah, me too.
We have funds coming in. As soon as the ad went in the paper, we've had a lot of funds coming in. I've been getting calls of just lots of private donors. And then some other people that run organizations asking us to apply for their grants. So we've already had lots of funds coming in. I don't know the total of what that would be right now. But people are calling in.
Do you have an alumni contact list, like email list?
I do not, but I know who I could go to to find that if it exists.
Yeah, because I'm thinking about, I was not an alumni of marching band, but my sister was, and I think she'd be way willing to give a donation. But she knows nothing about this, except what I'll tell her now.
Yeah, so I will meet with the person that is helping organize the alumni band. And then, you know, I'm sure they have.
Send out some kind of email?
Exactly.
And say that we want it for this next summer and blah, blah, blah. You could get a lot of money.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for.
Just, so I spoke to Mr. Berg the other day. We kind of had a conversation. I did share an email with the board on a possibility. And I hear what you're saying, that you, it's hard to go out and look for money because they're saying national funds, national funds. So if we, if the board were to say, or the district were to say, we do have a capital account, this would be considered a capital expenditure. And we actually have a capital reserve. If we were to commit $10,000, like as seed money, then you have something, you go out and ask. And then if you didn't meet your goal, if you didn't get, then I think maybe come back to the board, or you and I talk, Mr. Berg, and we and get something together for the board just to see what the shortfall is. Because I think, you know, Mr. Berg and I also talked that, let's say, let's say that you raised enough to buy sixty uniforms, right? Maybe that's, maybe that's something that you settle for today. So you're ready for the parade, you're ready going forward, and then as you add students to band, then we add additional uniforms as we go, rather than purchasing, you know, a hundred and they sit on the shelves for three or four years, so. And I get you on it all, and I understand that, but I'm just saying, maybe we reel it back a little bit if you don't reach your goal and if, I can't speak to the board, but I would assume that we'd be willing to support them as long as we can afford to.
Well, you know, if we can afford to, I would say we should go higher than that.
Well, we have to wait till the audit comes in.
What?
We have to wait till the audit comes in too. We'll do whatever we can.
Well, I think we should go higher than ten. I mean, we haven't, as a school district, we need to invest in this. I mean, we need to give the band something really substantial. If we want a band, everyone says that we want a band. We want a good band. We want a big band. We want the glory days back.
We're just starting at ten.
Okay, cause I understand, I would support more than that.
Right.
And I don't know who Facebook burns with or not, but I posted something out over the weekend to try to find like the accomplishments, the trips that our bands have been on. And there's been a fair amount of activity, like go in and post something on that so some of those people who have already responded might see something that we're trying to raise X thousand before the parade, we want, or before January first.
Yeah.
We want new uniforms for the parade.
Right.
It's worth it.
It's well worth it. And the people are so enthusiastic. Band alumni are some of the best alumni ever, honestly. They love to be being in band.
Doesn't cost anything to try it.
No, that's great.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, can you get your website?
Oh, yeah. What's the website?
Hibbingbands.com.
Hibbingbands with an S?
Hibbingbands, I believe, yes.
Not dot org, dot com?
We have millions of people watching on TVs.
Well, let's, let's try it.
Right here, if you've got his personal email for the school.
Is the board okay with that suggestion that moving $10,000 from our reserve capital account just to give them some startup money here and then?
I'm supportive. As long as you can use it for a matching grant, you have $10,000.
Yeah, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And this is our website.
This is our website. So is there a link to donate on this? There will be.
There will be. There's some final touches, like what you're looking at right now, there should be a calendar right here. There's just some, some final touches we're waiting on.
The tech department needs to link some of those things.
Yeah, we have to connect a Google Calendar to this, and then we're right here, we're hoping to put a donate button.
Okay, so you're gonna have your own website, but then when someone goes to your website, is it connected to the Hibbing Schools? Our big Hibbing Schools website?
This is our own separate website, but we can put a link to this website on.
If you're in, yeah, if you're in Hibbing Schools, can you link, is it gonna be linked to your website?
I can request.
I don't know that the tech department would do that because we have funded this ourselves.
Because you're a separate 501(c)(3), so are other booster clubs that have websites?
Right.
Are they from our school? I don't think they're from our school website.
No.
So once you can, once you add the link to your website, will you add the website to your donation letter?
For what reason?
I don't think you'd be associated with the school if you're.
Oh, you can't? Is that right?
Well, I mean, bands are programmed. We've got band during the day here, and marching band is an offshoot of our daily program. I don't think putting your link on our website is gonna violate anything.
Absolutely.
I don't think so either.
Yeah, I mean, I can verify that. When you're ready, just reach out. I'll talk to Joel and we'll see what we gotta do.
Okay, for sure.
A lot of homework. Good January. Okay, we better move on here before.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And keep us posted as you go along, like I said, so do what we can to help. Okay, with that, we'll move to item seven, administrative reports and directors. This comedy on the parade last night was very good. And also the play I made in front of my grandkids to, and a couple of their friends were in it, but I tell you what, excellent, excellent.
The play is getting a lot of positive, lots of positive feedback.
It was very professional, very, I don't know, just really excellent. It was six, I think Megan told me the night I was there, which was, I don't know, one night, Friday night, she said six hundred and thirty people that went. That's a lot.
Yeah.
It was, they did three. In that same play? I don't know, I don't think so. But that leads me to my next topic of, we really should revisit getting someone, I mean, are we ever gonna talk about getting more help for our theater? We don't have anyone.
For a theater or auditorium?
Auditorium.
Yeah, it comes up once a year or two a year.
I hope, it's just, you know, Megan Reynolds was here giving us that big presentation. And we were all for it, and we're all for theater and all that, but Dustin Davidson, who owns the bus company, he's the only guy that knows how to do any of that. He's it. They said if they lost him, they'd be all up. So I don't know.
I'm concerned about that.
We should keep that on our radar.
That's something we need to talk to just one of those, I'm sure we're gonna be doing all these joint things together.
Yes.
Wouldn't hurt to bring it up.
Yeah, I know that. I think they're struggling for a director right now.
Well, I understand. Both, yeah, both of us, I mean, their kids are in the place also, I understand. So we knew they're for their places, so.
Yeah.
Some kids are in our place.
They're on Vietnam, aren't they?
Well, we partnered for that one year. We sent kids there because we didn't have a director, but now we've gone back to separate programs again.
But still with the collaboration.
Yeah.
But I mean, maybe if they're looking, maybe if we could pay half and make the payoff. And we could have someone that knows what they're doing in both places.
Yeah.
So in the meantime, is there anybody that can be or is trained on that panel that Dustin can train? I mean, that's what I'm concerned about. If Dustin can't make it one night or get sick or something, and we have a big production going, is there anybody else that's trained to run that sound or light board or whatever it's called?
So when the board's been updated now, recently, it's pre-programmed with different settings. So you can go in if you just wanna run, Kirk is here, and he's gonna speak tonight, and Kirk probably knows more about this than I do, but I believe you can go in and you can pre-program different settings, using different lights. It's kind of, you know, just a real basic, turn it on, and you can have production. And then you can do more advanced programming and I believe we're training, you might know this, Kirk, through our career academies, I think we're training some kids on how to use that board. We have very staff that are being trained on how to use that board, but.
In our tech department, you know, by and large, I'd say eighty, ninety percent, our tech department handles social events.
Joel Anderson?
Plays and the musicals, that's when they kind of contract out Dustin, cause that's a little more.
Well, you mean tech department as in Joel Anderson?
Yeah, so they do have concerts and South Symphony Orchestra.
You understand, wasn't it forty hundred?
Oh, so they do? I didn't know that.
Yeah, our tech department is trained in on that, not to the extent that Dustin Davidson is. So Dustin will do the musical, and he might do stuff with the one act and the play. And if we have a really big special event, we might ask Dustin to come in and help. When we did our Warren Twenties review, we asked Dustin to come in and help, but I'd say eighty percent of the events that happen in our auditorium, our tech department handles that sound light board stuff.
Oh, they know how to do it?
Yeah. And we have it in the contract, in our auditorium manual, that we provide a general wash, just kind of general setup, and if there's anything kind of above and beyond that, they have to request that ahead of time, so we're prepared to do those things.
So our tech department, Director Nyberg, I'm sorry, Gage, or feedback Gage, is one of our techs here in school. Kind of, Gage is kind of the go-to. He does a lot of our events. But the other techs in that office will rotate through and they serve the auditorium, that's their role, is Joel's office. It used, remember, it used to be Jim Jukic and some other custodians that come over from the grounds crew. We've kind of reconfigured that with people that are more knowledgeable on technology.
Type stuff, yeah.
But like Kirk is saying, you know, the big productions where there's lots of changes and lightings and cues and that's when Dustin usually comes in. And you gotta be there like for every practice. And Gage and our crew aren't sitting there for a month on end, you know, practicing with students. They're just coming in for.
Where's Dustin at?
Where Dustin is, yeah. And they're paying him, yeah.
So is there somebody?
Is there a backup for Dustin?
That's the whole bottom line. Is there a backup for Dustin?
Yes, cause there's a, there's pre-programmed things that you can do in this light board, like if somebody came in and they said they wanted pink lights with, you know, whatever, with this effect, we can push that button and it can load it for the program, but somebody's gotta go in and set those cues and Gage can do that, and our tech department can do that, but that's, if he was to do that on a daily basis for every program, it would be overwhelming. Emergency, yes, I think we could have a program, but is he trained and capable of doing that day in and day out? So yes, do we have, do we have a person that manages the auditorium and runs the? We don't. And I know that's what they're asking for, is somebody like there all day, that's their job. We don't have that.
And I would just like to, I mean, I know what it's like right when you have backup people, right? But I would like to see somebody, and maybe it would take years to be as proficient as Dustin, but maybe ninety percent as proficient as Dustin because if we had one of these big productions and suddenly Dustin got sick, we would be, it would not be the same production that people put all those hours in working.
Well, that's Dustin, he's got a backup. Well, you know, if he can't be, he would have somebody that.
But Dustin's not like our lawyer. They contract with, these groups pay in contract with Dustin.
So if you contract with him, what I'm saying is maybe he's got somebody with him who goes somewhere else or.
Or he could recommend maybe someone.
That's what I mean, just to ask him if he has any ideas.
It's not his responsibility to seek care. I mean, Megan Reynolds, is she possible? She's such, she's got a theater degree and everything else. She said she was available.
But I don't know if she knows that.
I don't know, but maybe she would be trained and maybe she could be better. I don't know.
We have had various trainings on boards. I don't know if you sat in any of that.
I've requested, but I haven't been included.
Okay, I mean, so Tyler, Joel, some of those tech crew, they have been meeting and training, and Dustin's been a part of that too, so. Cause it is new, I mean, correct? I mean, there's some new, there's new light board that just happened in the last few months, correct?
Right.
Basically since about the start of school, so yeah, they've been working and training on that.
Well, and I just want to say, I think Dustin does an amazing job, and I appreciate what he does, and I hope he sticks around forever, but it's always good to have a backup. He's pretty busy with his bus company.
Great.
Is he up next?
Yes, Mr. Lewis is up for QMead, absolutely.
Well, thank you for the time. I'll try to keep it brief. Let's give you a kind of a review of last year. Our state report for QMead is due in November first, so it seems like it's a day late, dollars short to start this talk about last year, but that's what I'll do. And just give a really quick update on up to this point, how we're doing this year. So I'm gonna ask questions as I go or hold them to the end. So I also like to add this in here, and I kind of broke the record for the new folks on the board. Again, QMead program users versus non-users, can they rate the quality of education in the district higher? More favorable impressions with superintendent, administration, and school board. A little more positive about financial management, support referendums more. And are better informed and view their district more positively than non-users of QMead programs. We like our QMead users. So again, this is all last year's numbers. I've tried to add in kind of this year's too a little bit just to compare. So early learning, our school readiness, last year we ran about seventy-three, rolling the forest program. I think we're at about seventy-one this year, but we have been getting some kids trickling in to the forest program. We actually have some threes that wanna move up to the forest. Forty-five were on tuition assistance last year, you know, felt fifty this year. You know, the school readiness was designed years and years ago. It was designed to get kids ready for kindergarten. And it's for those kids that don't really have that opportunity to go to private schools and things like that, so it's really designed for those have-nots to a certain extent, so. Fifteen families received a rap here last year. That's our after-school rap here. I would say the majority of parents do drop their kids off early, can drop off as early as seven thirty. And this is more stuff after-school rap here, that's there until five thirty. So sixteen this year. Last year, eighteen students were transport, and this year we're at thirty-four. Community's a little more generous than I was when it came to the transport. I really tried to push those parents to try to find alternate transport if they could. But they're pulling it off. But they're pulling it off. Thirty-four preschoolers you get on and off the bus is a challenge, so. Our half-day threes, fourteen enrolled last year. Of course, this year we have an extra section, sorry, about twenty-nine. Nine on tuition assistance last year, fourteen this year. Early childhood family ads, this is when the parents come with the children. They save them an hour, hour and a half, one day a week. Flberta Five and her parents, last year, a hundred and sixty-eight enrolled. There were two sections, two sessions, I'm sorry. About ninety parents and we had thirty-two kids in the sibling care. And the sibling care again is something unique that Kevy does, um, that a lot of schools don't on the range that we offer. So if you were bringing your child to East of Phoenix, you have an older sibling, um, that's not in it, they can go to our wrap care free of charge. I'm sorry, the sibling care free of charge while the parents put that other student in the classroom. The parents never leave the building, but, so thirty-two last year. Uh, early childhood screening falls under that QMIA. It is a state mandated program and it is a district program. But QMIA coordinates that. We had six last year. Screened a hundred and fifty-one kids. They had about sixty-one referrals. That could be for height or vision and hearing and also spread referrals are lumped in there. Our kid are connections. That's our, uh, food do in the spring where all the preschoolers are there for kindergarten or next year come. It was really low numbers this last year. We'll see if we can get that number back up. And then we did a handful of special events through the early childhood as well. Uh, youth enrichment from last year. And I can go through all these, uh, the little asterisk with the, the red asterisk, those are kind of some new programs we did last year. So we had some new finance stuff, which was, uh, great. Some language box, some knowledgeable. There's some money for that, for the physical graders. We're doing a math masters this year. I think we have forty-seven, forty-eight kids signed up for that. Our youth sports, we did some volatiles last year, so volleyball for the little ones. We did that again this year. Reparation, we did some open gyms over at ELC. On Saturdays, we'll continue doing that this year comes winter months. Uh, the youth swimming lessons, again, we did start to pick that up in the city last year. And we had three hundred and thirty-one kids in swimming lessons this past school year, came over the summer, so it's great. And of course, there's some volunteer opportunities for the youth also. So there's the youth sports, safety town, special events, and we have Key Club come and help with our adults and siblings program. So about two thousand and two, um, kids participated or registered for those programs last year. Our adult enrichment, we did some music classes and art quilts. Those are kind of some new ones from last year. Adult aquatics as well. We took over from the city last year. Uh, so two hundred and thirty-seven registrations last year in that program. And of course, there's volunteer opportunities for adults as well. It's the bike rodeo, our governor's training Paris night. Certain of our youth coaches, sports coaches and advisory boards. Six hundred and twenty, um, for the adult enrichment programs. Adults and civilians fall under our, our QMIA as well. So we do a Friday night rec and Saturday bowling. And of course, we, we invite those folks to our other school and district sponsored events as well. Four hundred and fifty-two, um, folks come to our programs last year for that program. Facility and scheduling falls under QMIA. And I usually say it's non-athletic, um, outside of school hours. During last year, we had about ninety-six different school-related groups. So again, if you count each of the sports groups and clubs and PTOs, plays, things like that. And forty-three outside non-school related groups, uh, user facilities. And we had about sixty-three events, um, or groups in the auditorium. So that, that's not counting, you know, every time the musicals and they're rehearsing, that's not counting that. It kind of count them as one. And the play is one, you know. Staff and volunteers. I always go through and I should listen to Tiffy. I'm like, am I counting this right? It just seems like a lot of folks. But I go back and it is. You know, we had a hundred and thirty different instructors and ninety-seven different volunteers last year in our QMIA programs. So that's, that's crazy. So two hundred and twenty-seven individuals really helped make all of our programs run, so. It's a lot of work coordinating all those folks and background checks, things like that. And so, some of those are, are full-time staff that, that teach classes. Again, a lot of them are, are part-time staff. So far this year, um, we've had about sixteen hundred registrations in our programs in the first two and a half months, three months of school. And one hundred and fifty-two instructors, staff and volunteers in our programs. And as I said, and Chisholm is going good. I have a weekly conversations with Hannah. She emails me with questions with administration stuff. We got their state report submitted and our state report submitted. Putting together our program for our janitor April program brochure. So we're gonna try to get more Chisholm stuff in there as well, so. Don't go too fast. Again, thanks for your support. Again, school board, of course. Mr. Aldridge, trainer's been great. Alex, business office, Tyler, personal staff, Nathan, Joel and IT. Really, you know, the business office, certainly Tyler, um, and Joel, and QMIA's kind of up to there too. We really are involved with every other department and, um, school in the district. So, um, so the thank you list is long. So Mr. Byrd, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Bestold, Mr. Cora, Mr. Bubardi, Chad Snyder, certainly maybe Fusco this year, support staff as well as Keith Turner and Becky Vensmacher. Our QMIA, early childhood boards, um, their staff, QMIA volunteers. And being special thanks to Tiff McCosky. Um, all of our secretaries in the district are just so incredible. Taylor Finkel from last year, Hannah Linz, our early childhood fourteen-hour person secretary. Alex Steeny, who we all know, just took the bold light of orange with that aquics program. I hope she never leaves. Hope she sticks around for about ten years. We're actually, um, I'm trying to get her into a lifeguard instructor course so she can actually teach the lifeguards. Cause it's hard enough to find lifeguard classes alone on an instructor course, so. Brittany Kolschak helps coordinate our wrap here. She's great with the young kids and those young families. And then Hannah Barney over at Chisholm as well. And if there's any questions, I've got the attorney answer.
Um, on the early, on the screening?
Yeah.
I know we have to do it and everything. But why are we doing it now with our teachers and closing? I don't think anyone. Maybe, maybe you all know that we close our early childhood center one, every Friday, one Friday a month.
Yeah. So prior to, two years ago, uh, we had to get, um, present retired teachers. And we have, um, six screeners, five, six screeners running at a time, plus we have about four or five volunteers. Plus someone checking people in. Um, it was, it was the production to get that going. And there are a lot of volunteers. And every day I show up that morning, I get there like six, eight AM to set stuff up and there's, the light was blinking. It was, I can't come today. I can't come today. We already scheduled fifty kids to come that day for screening, right? So, um, when we moved everything to one site, at the ELC, we made that decision that, um, they're trained in, they're professionals, they're experts, so.
The teachers?
Yeah.
Oh, no doubt.
Yeah. So that's kind of the rationale, I think.
But it's one less day of learning for the kids every month. And it's one day of inconvenience for all the parents every month.
Yeah, that's, that's, and I, I, I see your, your point, Kathy. Uh, we did, when we went to the ELC though, we went from two days a week to five days a week. So those kids got a lot more contact days and times, so.
Oh, yeah.
And we, and Kirk and I have, Kirk and I have been talking. I mean, I think we want to provide, maybe provide some other opportunities that are during the day during a school day. Just some families can't get there, so it'd be nice to, you know, maybe have a screening once a year in the evening or maybe do a Saturday screening or something just to. Because that is, that's our kindergarten numbers, right? I mean, the more we can screen, the more that's, that just adds to our.
Oh, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
And it's one, we're closing our school one day a month.
It's only six a year.
Huh?
They'll just do, they screen six times a year.
And what's good?
That's six days.
Yeah. What's nice is right now
We don't care. We don't.
Preschool stuff isn't quite as micromanaged or we're not held by those hundred and eighty or whatever days contacted a year. So we're not bound by that. So it's easy enough for us to say to cancel class the one time a month or six times a year.
Do we provide daycare for the parents then or?
We don't, but they're, they're notified nine months ahead of time. I mean, they're, we don't just spring it on them.
Okay.
As the calendar.
Now, if we get this addition, if, you know, we get some PK money, this voluntary PK, we might have to relook at the screening, right? Because that, their hours, required hours do meet that threshold higher than.
Well, we're, we're already meet that.
Oh, we are? Okay, good.
For six days.
Okay, good.
We need that. Cause we, we got that retro line on last year.
Okay.
So we, we did meet that threshold.
Okay, awesome.
Thanks, Kirk.
Very good. Thank you. That's good numbers and good programs.
Good, thank you.
Okay, any committee reports? Here we go. We'll go to Amy in the industry of business, Sir Ellis.
Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I made a motion to approve the resolution to accept donations. Ten thousand dollars from Owen's family in support of industrial art classes. Twelve thousand five hundred dollars from the Hoot Foundation in support of the thirtieth anniversary at the auditorium. Fifty dollars from June Delbrand to support the purchase of cheer uniforms. Thousand dollars from Revival Unlimited to support cheer uniforms. Ten thousand dollars from the football booster club in support of the cheaper field scoreboard. Ten thousand dollars from Camden Guggenheim to support the purchase of player robes. Eleven thousand seventy-seven and eighty cents from Carolyn Activerg in support of Alex Sepulvede's industrial art classes. Six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars from the Kevy Retirements Association in support of scholarships. And five hundred dollars from the Evelyn, Evelyn Alex Lodge in support of Sarah Nelson's fax glasses.
So, move by Director Folter, supported by Director Bubardi. Any discussion? Thanks all those people. Here you need no more discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's what we're saying. Motion, jury, thank you.
It'd be as a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four membership to the range association of municipalities and schools and to oblige a due of the amount of two thousand one hundred dollars.
Hold on. Chair, support. Any discussion?
Chair, um, if I remember correctly, last year this was like seventeen hundred dollars? And just, everybody's dues have gone up that substantially?
They have. It was, I don't know the percentage, but in the last meeting, I know that everybody across the board was getting an increase. And it varies on your size and your township and here. And I, I thought, um, again, cause they were talking about the whole dues process and they were saying, you know, how, how they arrived at, at these dues and they couldn't determine how they ever established these dues for different, for townships and cities and schools. And schools pay the most. Schools have the largest chunk of this. So I suggested, you know, maybe schools did a holiday for a year, you know, because they paid so much. Well, that didn't go over very well. And I said, well, maybe we could just meet and just agree that we're, we're gonna look at how these dues are established and somehow make, you know, make them fair. I didn't get any support or I didn't get any, anyone to back me up. So, um, again, I mean, I know it's a cost, but I think our, our, our bang for our buck again, the support that we get from Rams. All the initiatives that happened at the legislative session and Steve Georgie was right there at the table and included me in many of these meetings. I went down and lobbied on behalf of Rams in our district. Um, they, they do work very hard for us.
Still worth the money, but like everything else, it's.
Yeah. But it's, it's inflation increase. Everybody else is struggling just like we are.
So did you get a sense that all the dues went up by this percentage? You know, all the.
Yes.
Yeah. I thought that was flat across.
Yeah.
Everybody gets it seen.
Yeah. I, I don't remember the percentage off the top of my head. I wanna say it was like three to five percent, if that makes sense. But that math doesn't look great, but I'm doing it right here in my head.
I thought it was seventeen hundred last year.
I think eighteen or seventeen hundred last year.
It was like seventeen or seventeen fifty.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Better be a roll call.
Yes.
I have a question before we vote. What do we get for this coming on our desk? Like a lobbyist.
A who?
Lobbyist. We can have somebody come in here and give you a whole dissertation. You do, we have a new person, Paul Peltier, who took over for him. He's volunteered.
Well, I mean, I'm kind of trying to.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
You know, we went from seventeen hundred, if that's correct, to twenty-one hundred. So what do we, we're just paying more for a lobbyist? Cause he's a better lobbyist?
It's, it's, it's just the inflationary increase. Um, I think his salary is, and benefits were a little bit more than Steve's were. Just given the, you know, coming in and the person and just trying to find somebody to fill it. I do know that the, their budget tied to dues just basically makes their payroll. It pays for their part-time secretary, pays for his, pays for, you know, other lights and heat. They're just, they're breaking even every year.
Yeah, and this went up prior to this other guy getting hired.
Yeah, they're prepared for annual meeting, really. It's gonna be typically donations and, I believe sponsors that be there.
This is a seventy, seventy percent increase.
Yeah.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
What do we say?
Same.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yeah, everybody said something at the same time.
Oh, yeah, aye.
Let the minutes roll there. We're anonymous.
Anonymous. Aye.
Okay, item C.
I concede the motion to vote the regular state board meeting at four o'clock PM and the truth and taxation meeting at six o'clock PM on December sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Support. Move by Director Mulloff and supported by Director Folter. Any discussion? We have to do this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Follow same sign. Motion, jury, thank you.
And I indeed a motion to cancel the optional school board meeting for December twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Hold on.
Support.
Move by Director Folter, supported by Director Bubardi. Any discussion?
Chair?
Yes.
Do you think the audit report will be ready to be presented by them?
It's still possibility. I know that's, it would be the board's desire, that would be my desire too, but still just wrapping up a few items, so.
If it does, we can call for a special meeting.
If not, we'll try and keep it, you know, further away from Christmas. That we have the last two years.
Because we have to have the meeting. I'm going to be for the end of the calendar here.
You want to do that first?
That's true.
And then before you ask me to vote.
I have, I have something too. You go first.
Wait, did this, did it prove all this? Okay. Who's ever first?
Um, okay. I actually have three things. Sorry. Um, I know the last board meeting, we talked about the vaping sensors. Um, and you did send out an email about that. And then I got to thinking, um, you know, some of these students could very well be addicted at this point, right?
Oh, yeah.
Um, do we offer any resources for help? I mean, rather than, I mean, they may not come to the principal, they may not come to the counselor of fear of getting in trouble, but do we offer any help to say, if you are addicted, you need help, you want help, here you go?
Yes. Um, you know, there's, I don't know if I can go put my finger on it right now, but we have like flyers information up all over the building about suicide prevention, drug abuse, vaping. Do you need, you know, are you, is there domestic abuse and all? I mean, there's, we have a lot of that. I do think, you know, that the relationship with our counselors is, you know, if, if a student comes in and, and confides in a counselor about an addiction, they're not running to ticket that student, right? I mean, it's a call to the parent. And so I think a lot of our counselors do have that rapport with students and they, and kids kind of know that, right? I mean, within reason.
You know, I just hope that it's not always about we are so quick to, you know, a consequence, a punish, but if you truly need help, also knowing that we, we do want to help and maybe it's not our place exactly, but at least being able to give the. the resources.
Yep.
So that was my one question.
And can I just add to that too? So we are moving ahead with the trial with these, with these vape detectors. So we got some quotes today. Mr. Snyder's working on it. There's some tech stuff that has to happen, like how they get wired and how they get connected. So Joel Anderson was looking at their manual to see if it's doable. But we had planned on outfitting a couple of bathrooms and just kind of leave that confidential on which bathrooms. And we also would have the ability that they be mobile. So if we, you know, find a third floor bathroom, there's lots of activity, we could move the detector there. There's, there's still hearing that, you know, it's just a ton of false positives and a ton of, but again, we're thinking if it's a deterrent, if it helps, if it's manageable, we're going to sure give it a try. So that's coming.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And then I know, again, I interviewed you about Nicole Stone, the psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner, for the answer. So I, before I even saw this come out on parents, where I was contacted by a community member, so I, I didn't know anything about it until they brought it to my attention and then I saw it. But I guess the alarming piece of that was the prescribing medication. And why do we need somebody at the school prescribing medication? This isn't, you know, hey, I already have this, you know that, so I'm going to take it. This is, from my understanding, writing a new prescription, giving it to somebody for treatment. Is that correct?
You know, and, yes, she's got her hand, she's saying, so Carrie has kind of been involved with this and been, and helped secure this. So do you mind talking a little? Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to assure you that.
Could you stand up here, please, Carrie?
Sure.
Thank you.
I've been quite involved with North Homes and our partnership with them, partnership with them with the, with the school district. And I completely understand your concern and want to assure you that Nicole is not going to be a med pusher in any way, shape or form. Knowing her as a person and knowing North Homes philosophy, they're going to provide all of the available resources that are, that are out there. But there are parents that are looking to get into, let's say, a physician for med management. And they cannot. It is next to impossible. I mean, even just being at the Greenhaven, the number of kids that we had that came in on meds, but they needed med adjustments. And the one good thing about the partnership is that a lot of times, we, we're the ones that are providing feedback on how different medications are affecting their behaviors in school. And so instead of having to connect somehow third-hand with the medical provider on what's happening, like, well, we're seeing this kid is way, way, way too tired throughout the day with this med change. We're going to have that ability to communicate right on, on site with them, with Nicole, for those kids that are on medication. But I do feel strongly that, you know, therapy, the CTSS skills-based services that they're providing, those are going to be our go-tos for, but it's for those parents that are seeking. We would never say to them, like, we think you should consider medication. It would be more of, this is something that the parent has come to and they would like someone to manage their meds.
Okay, that's helpful. That's, that's right. So, okay, thank you.
So the parents would be really involved?
Well, yeah.
If there's any change in meds or anything?
The parents will have to be onsite at the appointment.
Oh.
Nobody's going to be coming in to an appointment as just a kid and they're, oh, I think you need, we need to up this med.
Okay, yeah.
This would, it's just, it's just the availability. And, you know, like I said, we've had so many instances where we've tried, like, special education teacher, myself, classroom teacher, we've sat down and had to schedule an appointment with a nurse practitioner that's prescribing meds about the, how the med chain is affecting a kid. And it can be a roller coaster ride for these kids. So it's more of a communication tool, I think, than anything else. And the two things that she's going to be providing that are going to be outstanding is the therapy, because we did lose our North Homes therapist this, this year. So she's going to be able to provide some therapy. And then those evaluations, like in order to even get a kid, a kid into CTSS services, they have to have a comprehensive evaluation. And right now, those are booked out everywhere in our community, like four to five months. So now we've got another person that can provide those evaluations, get those services up and running for those kids that really need them.
There's also mental health personnel at the service corp, additional help or whatever is needed.
And then I have just one more question. Sorry. So we posted today the secretary position.
Yep.
Right? So I just wanted to make sure. We have, what, six career academy leads?
The teachers, I believe.
Leads, teachers. I'm not sure what you call them. But are they being paid overloads for what now they're helping with, with you?
Yeah, we put it there. Yeah.
So the academy leads, it is one of their hours. I believe it's their duty hour. So like, instead of them having to, let's say, supervise the hallway or have a study hall, those kinds of things, it's, it's their duty hour. And, and they've agreed to it, to doing this as a duty, preferably to like watching ISS or having a study hall. And so the nice thing about me finally being here is that I've been able to sit down with each of them and help, help discuss what I can help them with, because they can't do it all within an hour. And I don't expect them to, you know, be working in the evenings. But, you know, Mr. Aldrich and I have had that conversation that there are things that they'd like to do. We can compensate them for that in the evenings. But so we're having a good communication now that we're able to talk about what, what are they able to do during that duty hour? And then what more can I help support them with during the day and in the evening? So like, I went to the engineering mentoring night with, and Carl, of course, went too, because that's Carl. So those kinds of things. And the secretary position is, you know, we have a career academy assistant who actually, her resignation is, she's resigned through tomorrow. She got a full-time job. And so that position will, that, part of that position that was posted will be to carry out those duties.
Thank you.
Director Niberg, you?
And I should have talked to Rick first, but I was wondering about some funds. You had mentioned, Rick, that possibly the June Hendrickson fund donation, whatever, possibly some money from that could be used for the 100th anniversary celebration?
I, I, I think.
So, I mean, it would be nice to maybe get that going, get that set up. I don't know if we have to make a motion to put some money into an account, you know, for the... And I should tell everyone, Kim and I have had two meetings now on the 100th anniversary, and the formal name was decided. It's the Hibbing High School 100th Anniversary Celebration. And it'll be a week long of activities from July 6th to the 13th, culminating with a jubilee parade. And we wouldn't have anything on that date at all, because there'll be the parade, the dance, whatever. But most of our activities that will be running will be from the 6th to the 12th, I guess it would be. We'll have tours and, you know, several things going on. And we'll update, you know, often probably as we, as we go here. But it would be nice to get some money set up.
Sure. And I, I maybe defer to you, Alex, on what the best process for that is. Does it, does it require forward approval, or do we just simply transfer? I mean, it was, as long as it meets the requirement of the donation, right, to support the activities that it was donated for?
Yeah.
Just in terms of funds.
Right, right. The group doesn't have its own.
No, we don't have a fiscal agent. No, no, we don't have anything.
So I mean, if we determine.
I don't anticipate a lot. I think the main expense is going to be these booklets we're making. We're doing, Kim and I are both doing a lot of research now on all kinds of historical facts about the high school. And it's all going to be in this booklet. And we will be selling the booklets, but still the printing costs, you know, we're going to have to pay to print it. And then we'll be selling, so then we'll get one back also in the back end of the year. And then hopefully to keep in the historical book.
Right.
The, the booklets. Oh, yeah. Some booklets, yeah.
Are you set up as a nonprofit?
No, we are not.
I wouldn't recommend it?
What or what?
Or run it through somebody that has a nonprofit? If you're going to be selling books and getting money from June Hendrickson Foundation, you may want to be set up as a viable investment.
And I think we should have a conversation about that, because really what we're focusing on is the school. You know, like, we're going to have an event in the auditorium hopefully each night of the week. And tours of this building. And I think probably the furthest we're going to go out from it is there's going to be bus tours in the community, at least a few days a week. So it's really just.
Now, are you like bringing it up? You're going to be transferring money. If you're going to be paying for a bus, you're going to be paying for a booklet, you're going to be set up, donated?
Well, the booklets are not. I mean, we haven't talked about fronting that, but. We're not going to be asking for donations, are we? Well, if people want to donate. But I, but I think that's a conversation. We weren't planning to. With Alex is, who are they, it's the school, right? Like, who are they donating? The school would be our fiscal agent. They'd be donating right into this fund we can set up or. And if there's funds left, it would be, I, I see it as being the schools. Yeah.
Did you check the city tax rate for bus tours and things?
They're going to use the old. Great old buses, yeah. Ron Dicklick checked it out. Checked out the insurance implications and phoned out that we can use two buses or, I think, one at a time. But he said two we could use two different buses.
Be the buses for pit tours too. I know everybody's tired and wants to go. I just got one, one thing. I've had enough room to go to the schools with the new changes. Mr. Best, Mr. Busco. The only one I didn't see was Carrie. I don't know where her office is.
[laughing]
And the last thing I have, and I talked to you about, Mr. Aldrich, about this, for the incident where we had an early childhood. And I guess my question is, some, are the parents, are they trained as far as how to handle certain situations? As you know what I'm talking about is.
I didn't say much. I don't know anything.
A parent called me because she said that the police were calling her four-year-old son.
Oh.
That's not what happened. Officer.
Helmerson.
Helmerson just happened to be at the Washington, walked by, went in to see if they needed help in Mr. Busco's office.
Oh.
This young man had apparently hit the para. And the para grabbed, said that they were going to call the cops on him. And I don't think that's the proper procedure for how we do it. So that, my question was, are they trained as far as how to handle an early four-year-old?
So, so all, all of our PSAs that, that have been with us for more than a year have, have CPI training. They have, they know how to, how to protect themselves and protect the student. But now, when we have new PSAs that were hired and have just come in, they haven't had that yet. So the Mr. Lutzka and the principals are working on, on that training. But we've, I mean, it's been a, it's been a rough start with, with a lot of those behaviors this school year. There's lots of acting out, lots of, now, Kirk was talking about his screenings. You know, we can't require screenings of students. I mean, parents have to submit to that screening. So a lot of times, we'll get a kindergartner that comes in that hasn't really been screened by anyone but the parent. And once they get into school, we realize, well, there's things here that we need to address. And so, you know, I, I spent some time down at the Greenhaven in the, in the beginning of the school year, the first couple of weeks. And, yeah, those PSAs are struggling. Now, in our, in our PLC tier, they, they get specific training for the students that they work with, specific on the disability that those, those kids have. So if they're working with somebody with fetal alcohol syndrome, we, we give them additional training so they, they know how to work with those students. But we're definitely playing catch-up though. It's, but it's, but yes, those, those PSAs are trained in the, in the protocol to keep themselves safe and keep the.
What's the CSI stand for again?
It's CPI, and I don't know what CPI stands for. I'm sorry. It's.
Crisis prevention.
Maybe.
What is it?
Consumer price index.
Crisis prevention, near prevention.
So it's, they're trained in how to handle these type of.
Before you hit the peak, yeah.
Yeah.
They teach, they teach different holds and different defensive moves. So you could, you could secure a student and not harm a student.
And even holds are very, very, very rare.
Yes.
You can kill a kid.
Okay.
And I just have one comment. And I can reach thanks to this board. So our Boys and Girls book, our new branch director started at the beginning of the school year. And when we ended our school year in summer, our average daily attendance was probably 25 to 30-ish. Last week, we hit our record high, and I haven't heard for this week, but we hit 70 attending one day. And you know what? And when we talk about these behaviors, our branch director is somebody who has over two decades of teaching experience and at all levels has been involved with young people. And it's really nice. She has an amazing staff down there. And so many kids that wouldn't probably be able to have after-school programming. And her philosophy is, there are difficult behaviors, right? When you talk about kids getting person in charge or the teachers. And her philosophy is, she wants to work with those kids. And she has been and has some success stories. So I think, you know, I feel as though that's just an extension of our school and our school day. And if we can help those little people, we're helping our teachers. So. Oh, yeah. It's, yeah. I just hope we have enough staff there. We have enough staff. We have enough. We have enough kids. We have enough staff. Space is getting to be a challenge, so.
Build it more.
And, and we have a part-time development director. So they're fully staffed for the first time. Brittany Lindstrom, so a Hibbing graduate. So that's, that helps a lot too. So, and thanks to our board, because I know like our advisory board in the U of M, our local advisory board, and the board of the Northland appreciates, you know, the collaboration and support by the school.
Very good discussion. I've heard nothing but good about that.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
With that, I had one thing. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody here. Thank you for showing up. Director Folter.
Folter.
Without objection, the meeting has adjourned. It's 5:20.